So if you're just joining us from the public, this is the OBSD Board of Trustees meeting. We are about three minutes away from the official start time. We are broadcasting. This is the two-minute warning to begin the meeting.
Can you hear me?
I got it right here. So keep yourselves muted, please, if you would, so we don't have background information and noise going and sound just... Okay, good evening. It is now 5:30, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. We are now in open session. We are at A, Call to Order. And we're now moving to B, Roll Call. Trustee Briscoe. You have to unmute yourself.
I can't even see the screen, so...
Okay, I'm going to leave you unmuted then for now, okay? Just please keep any background noise down. Thank you. Trustee Vice President Singer.
Here.
Clerk Souders.
Here.
Trustee Westwell.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. Roll Call.
Yes, I'm here. Can you please leave my microphone on, please? Thank you.
Yes, yes, we are. Go ahead. And Trustee Clayton Tarvin, I'm here. Okay, we're now at C, Agenda Adoption for the Regular Board of Trustees meeting for May 5, 2020, is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Vote to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. Trustee Briscoe?
No.
Singer?
No.
Souders?
No.
Westwell?
No.
And there's none from me, so we're going to move to the vote. Okay, Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Souders?
Aye.
Westwell?
Aye.
And I am a yes, so therefore it passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now at the part of the agenda that is letter D, Closed Session. The public is invited to comment on any identified items listed under Closed Session prior to the adjournment to Closed Session. In order to address the Board of Trustees, please email your comments to clee@obsd.org by 6:05 p.m. and comments will be read into the record D1, Government Code Section 54956.8. Conference with real property negotiators. Property, 4.4-acre parcel of land located at the corner of Warner Avenue and Nichols Lane, commonly referred to as the "Wintersburg Property." Agency negotiators, Carol Hansen, Superintendent Michael Conroy, Deputy Superintendent, negotiating parties, Oceanview School District of Orange County, National Trust for Historic Preservation and Trust for Public Land. Under negotiations, instructions and authority provided to negotiators will concern valuation, purchase, and assignment issues pertaining to disposition of said partial pursuant to agreement between landowners. And we are now going into Closed Session at 5:33. And before I bang the gavel, I'd like to remind my colleagues that you're going to leave this meeting and you're going to enter the Closed Session meeting through the link that was sent to you by our executive assistant. Any questions before we go? We're now going into Closed Session.
It's now six o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting back to order. And we are back at the Board of Trustees meeting for the Ocean View School District of May 5th, 2020, and I see that we in fact have a quorum. All the trustees are present. I see trustee Briscoe there. I see trustee Singer. I see trustee Souters, and I see down here in the corner this phone number would be trustee Weswell. And our superintendent is here, our deputy superintendent and our two super assistant superintendents, Hofer and Avila, and our assistant superintendent Cindy Lee, and our public information manager Trish Montgomery, and our IT department is down here on the left. Yes, we can hear you. Thank you. Okay, so we're now at E, return to open session and report of closed session action, and there's nothing to report. And so we're now at F, pledge of allegiance. And so if you would please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I have a flag here, my American flag that I use for my classroom every day. So if you would please rise to join in the pledge. And actually, it's going to be a little bit loud because we're all going to say it sort of at the same time, but here we go. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Have a seat. Okay. So we're at G introductions, and I sort of already did some introductions of who's here in the Zoom meeting, but Dr. Hanson, I'd like to ask you, are there any other introductions that you'd like to make? Right now, is there anybody else that needs to be introduced?
I think we're good. I think the only other person is Trish Montgomery, our public information manager, is on with us, and in a little bit, you'll hear from our PTO roundtable president and some of our union leaders.
Okay, and I just want to make an announcement. I got a communication from the president of CSEA, Jason Bozarth, and he's having technical difficulties, so he's not going to be with us this evening, and he sends his regrets.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go to the next page of the agenda, which are the minutes. We're here. We're at letter H. We're at H1, which is the regular Board of Trustees meeting minutes from April 21st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, great. We're going to move to the discussion phase. Trustee Briscoe, anything?
No.
Vice President Singer.
No.
Bert Souters. Okay, and trustee Weswell?
Yes, I have discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I just want to point out, it's not written in our minutes anywhere what actually happened, and it's required that we document the minutes. Trustee Briscoe made a motion to approve, and so his motion to approve the recommended suspension of board policy and administrative regulation 5121, grade slash evaluation of student achievement. And our board bylaw 9314 specifically says on line one, policies, bylaws, and administrative regulations may be suspended for a specific purpose and a limited time by majority vote. And so the motion that I just read you did not have a specific purpose in it, and it did not have a specific time period in it. So this is in direct violation of board bylaw 9314. It's a real shame that the board does not care about following bylaws, even though it's pointed out to them. It's a lack of attention to detail, and you know, it's really frustrating for me as a board member that have gone through the governance classes and some of these other things, and I understand that it's our job to follow the rules. And when the other board members decide not to follow the rules, it makes the board look bad, the district look bad, and me look bad, and it makes our president look bad. And so unfortunately, this is not in the minutes. I think it's important that I document it, and I have done so. So with that, I am done. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Briscoe, anything to say?
My best knowledge, the only requirement for notes for minutes from a meeting are a recordation of action taken in the affirmative. If it was negative, there's no need to require the information in the minutes, and all the minutes are required to show are the votes. How did each trustee vote? That's it. So it would be item number 01, administrative services data protection, blah, blah, blah. 12345 voted in favor. Boom. There's no requirement to record anything else in the minutes. I would advocate we follow that law minimality, minimalism, because that's all that's required. We don't need to put in discussion and what anybody thought or said. All we need to do is put in how people voted. If we voted no, then you don't put anything in. Item 01 passed. 50. Item 02 failed. You don't even put 02 in. You are 01, 03, 05, and move on.
Yes, trustee, yeah, please, those of you that have your mic on, you're going to have to to just mute until, yeah, thank you. Yes, trustee Briscoe, you're correct. That is the way that California law dictates. That's the, that's the minimum standard. But I think on its face value, the comments from our colleague are actually incorrect because there was a reason stated for the suspension of that policy. And the reason is we're in a global pandemic. It's called COVID-19, and that's the reason that was stated. That's the reason that was written, and that's what we voted upon to make sure that we have suspended the current grading process so that it's not punitive and a sort of punishment to our students who are just trying to get along and do the best they can in their learning, just like our teachers are trying to, to give their best education to our students. So I concur with trustee Briscoe, and I disagree with my colleague trustee Weswell. And we're now going to move to the vote. Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote?
I.
Trustee Singer?
I.
Trustee Souters?
I.
Trustee Weswell?
No.
And I'm an I, therefore it passes four to one with trustee Weswell in opposition. We're going to move on now. We're at I times certain, and tonight we don't have anything in our time certain part of our agenda, so we're now, we're going to go to J, public comments. At this time, members of the public may address the Board of Trustees regarding a matter of public interest not appearing on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board, per Education Code 35145.5 and Government Code 54954.3. No action may be taken on comments of off-agenda items unless specifically authorized by law. In order to address the Board of Trustees, please email your comments to cle@ovsd.org by 6:05 PM. Comments will be read into the record. Mr. Clerk, do we have any comments this evening?
We do. We have many, and if someone could time me on each one, I don't know if you want to do that, but some of them look like they might go a little long. I'm going to do my best. I'm usually a pretty quick reader.
Okay.
You want to sit back and grab yourself a cool drink because it's going to take a little bit of time.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to go ahead and be the timer for, for you. I'm going to set the clock now at three minutes so that we conform to the California Brown Act in the three-minute limit for public comments. Go ahead, commence, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, first public comment is from Jennifer Watson. Good evening, OVSD Board members. I'm the mother of two boys who attend school in the district. I'm writing to encourage you and to offer my support for you to open the OVSD school summer programs and open the schools up for the fall session in person so that our children can return to school with their peers and their teachers. I do not want the children to return to school with PPE, staggered schedules, or social distancing measures in place. The data does not support this, nor will the children adhere to these measures without great undue stress to themselves. The CDC website breaks down deaths by age for COVID-19. The most relevant age group for school-aged children is broken down as five to 14 years old. There are only three total deaths in the entire United States for that age group. While that is a sad fact, the reality remains that there are 40 deaths from the flu for children in that age group during the same period of time. The schools have never required PPE, staggered schedules, or social distancing to prevent flu transmissions, nor should they for COVID-19. Our children's best defense against sickness is a healthy immune system, one that is built by continuous exposure to the elements of life, a healthy diet, exercise, sunlight, and contact with other peers. You are tasked with making a decision for a very specific group of people, our children, a vast majority of whom are healthy, active, and deserve to be educated by the wonderful teachers we have in the district. Right now, our children are not receiving the social, emotional learning input that they need. The miss, I think she means they miss their routine, their friends, their teachers, and most importantly, they are not being challenged educationally at home like they would be by their teachers at school. I implore you to make the best decision for our children based on the data that specifically relates to the children you are affecting by your decision. Please do not base your decision on numbers or a narrative that doesn't apply to our children. That would be irresponsible of you and would not serve the best interests of our kids. You are educators. The decisions you make should be based on the most reliable facts that you can garner. Please research. Please advocate for our children to go back to school, to return to normal, not the new normal. The facts don't support such changes, and we should be teaching our children how and why. So why we know that, that so they can learn to think for themselves rather than settle for being told how to think. Our school district needs to take action and stand up for our children's education. The district supports getting our kids back to school without any changes to the way things were. Respectfully, Jennifer Watson, OVSD parent below, and then it says attached is a chart, and she has a chart. We may want to put this up. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but it's, there's a chart there. It has to do with deaths by age. And that is it.
Okay, thank you. We're not going to be showing the chart this evening, and so you can go on to the next comment. Thank you.
Okay, the next comment is much shorter. It comes from Jennifer Phillips, and it says, hello, as a mom of three young children, I would like dual Spanish immersion for my kids. I have a TK child for the September 2019, 2020 school year. She will be transferred out of the district, and our commute will be longer. All I will not change her school next year by uprooting her. She will continue her district. Also, her brother and sister will follow her and continue out of the district for six years. Second, I would like to see a trilingual program with Spanish in either French or Arabic. Thank you for for voicing my concerns and wishes for my children. Jennifer Phillips. That concludes that one. Oh, wait, there's a next page that she would like to be read. Also read, would like to also add that the board, the board meeting, that I would also like to see a dedicated science teacher that starts in TK all the way up to sixth grade, teaching science daily for at least three times per week with hands-on experiments for the children's afternoon enrichment with the core, at least for the little ones, reading, writing, math, et cetera, being taught in the morning, or however the individual teacher chooses to mix up the day. Science taught during school hours, not as an after-school enrichment with fee. Science builds curiosity, abstract thinking, and problem-solving skills at all ages. And I think that is it. Yes, that's it. Hello?
Just two letters? Oh.
That was it. No, no, I have more. I'm just saying that was it from, that was it from Jennifer Phillips.
Okay, carry on to the third comment, please.
Third one comes from Debbie Parrott. As a high school teacher and a parent in the OVSD district, it is crucial that the district follows state guidelines for each stage and get safety protocols in place before reopening schools. Things will need to be strategically planned in a way to keep our kids, teachers, and administration safe. It will take some time to plan ways to maintain social distance, avoid large congregations of kids on campus, et cetera, and the district should not rush to reopen before these things are in place, or there could be liability issues. Thanks. And then Debbie Parrott. Next one is from, I'm going to go with Yodi Vias. I hope I'm saying that right. It's actually got a J in it, but I don't know. Seems like that might be silent. I apologize if I got it wrong. I am writing to strongly oppose any school openings without strict regulations and PPE daily for all personnel and students. There should be new social distancing measures and procedures approved by OVSD. Any violations of these measures will be considered negligence and can be prosecuted by any parent. Thank you, Yodi Vias. Next one is from Stephanie Green. President Clayton Tarvin and Superintendent Hanson, OVSD board and staff, I am writing this to show my support for keeping the schools closed until the end of the school year. I believe your actions continue to save lives. I am grateful that you are putting all, putting the safety of the children, teachers, staff, and community, community ahead of any pushback you may receive. I would like to, like for you to continue to follow the science as you make decisions for the summer and fall. My hope is that the OC Health Department is putting together a plan for the fall that will provide testing when needed for all our teachers and children. There is a comprehensive plan in place to allow social distancing in the classrooms and for staff, protecting everyone while teaching and learning. Side note, I would like to see school updates on the HB ready site. Next one is Bethany Webb. I am the mother of a sophomore in H B. While I understand the need to get kids back to school, my son will not be coming back until science and data say it is safe. Please act with caution. If we go back too soon and it gets worse, we will be back to where we are now, but for longer, and loss of life is not worth opening hastily. Sincerely, Bethany Webb. Next one uh is from Linda Claw, much shorter. Uh it just says, uh opening schools early without social distancing endangers students and other residents of the Oceanview School District. Please follow the science. Next one is from Kathy Ryder, and it's a short one, too. It says, until you have medical and science professionals declaring that it is safe for the students, faculty, and staff to be in enclosed spaces for many hours each day, there is absolutely no reason to open the O V S D schools. As a retired educator and homeowner in H B, I would not allow my children or grandchildren to attend your schools. Please do the right thing and listen to the medical and science professionals. Kathy Ryder. That brings us to Libby Frolickman. Uh it says, dear O V S D Superintendent and Board Members, as a volunteer in the local kindergarten class, I want you to know that you should take time, take the time needed to figure out exactly how to safely reopen schools with appropriate social distancing. I understand that kids are not the most vulnerable population from the COVID virus, but you are also responsible for the well-being of all of the district employees. Since this disease is highly contagious, while carriers are asymptomatic, we must consider all those at-risk people that will be exposed when the children and employees go home. Furthermore, we must also consider all the teachers and support personnel that might be in a high-risk group themselves. Schools do not operate in a vacuum, and we cannot behave as if they do. Please continue working diligently to keep our community safe and to show us how to lead with due consideration of the facts. Thank you for all that you are doing to protect our community. Libby Frolickman, Fountain Valley resident, twenty years. Uh we're into Julie Kilene. Please consider making a carefully thought-out decision before reopening the Oceanview School District. I suggest a process needs to be implemented to successfully put into place social distancing in addition to a model of what a classroom environment should look like before just opening up the schools. As a parent of two adult children who went through O V S D and an active member of the P T A as well as other volunteer activities in the Oceanview School District, I asked I asked that you assign a task force and consider implementing any reopening with carefully thought-out decision-making. We must ensure that we're protecting all members of the community and safeguarding the protection of our children and their parents, as well as our educators and our frontline workers who could be the victims of a hastily implemented plan. Thank you for kindly, thank you kindly for your careful consideration. Sincerely yours, Julie Kilene. Uh let's see, who is a long one. Robert and Kelly Gillespie uh is next. Dear Oceanview School District Superintendent and Board Members, thank you for your kind attention to this letter. We are a childcare provider leasing space at the Meadow View site and have been leasing space since nineteen eighty-six from O V S D. We provide care for infants, preschool, and after-school. We heard today that there has been discussion of real of opening the schools early and without social distancing protocols and other protective measures. The regulations for licensed childcare centers because of the COVID nineteen are extremely strict and rightly so. Our efforts to comply with these new policies and procedures put into place to keep staff, children, and families from contracting this virus are extremely time-consuming and costly, and again, rightly so. It is very disturbing to us to hear that this is even a consideration. All of the least lease tenants have to comply with these new guidelines, policies, and procedures put into place from the Department of Social Services, Community Care Licensing, and to offer the safest environment we possibly can. If the children and families attending your schools are allowed to come back too early, and if the most basic standards we have all been trying to comply with to keep our community safe, i.e. social distancing, are ignored and changed, how does that affect us and the entire community at large? We must comply with and gladly do so these restrictions, including social distancing, and the O V and the O V S D would not. We have operated our Childcare Center in this community for thirty-four years, thirty-four years, wow, and have been participating residents of Huntington Beach for almost thirty-seven years, and ask that the O V S D make decisions based on the need to protect all the citizens in our community and the surrounding communities. Please base your decisions on recommendations from the experiments, experts in the field of health and safety and the CDC, and not based on some people that are simply tired of having to comply with these restrictions restrictions that have kept us safe. You all have some very challenging and difficult decisions to make, and we thank you for your efforts on behalf of the community that at times must feel overwhelming. Please know that you have so much support from our community when you keep us safe. Thank you again for your kind attention. Hope you all stay well. Robert and Kelly Gillespie. Next one is from Melinda Lynch. It's a little bit shorter. Uh dear O V S D Superintendent and Board Members, as a friend of parents in O V S D, I want you to know everyone I know supports the slow opening of schools. Parents know it takes time to figure out how social distancing will work once schools open. Parents want to protect their kids, uh teachers, staff, janitorial staff, cafeteria workers, and anyone else in the district. They feel you'd be risking lives if you opened too soon and no good and no good plans for social distancing and testing and all the public health standards. Please do the right thing, even though I know there is pressure to rush to open. Thank you all for doing so, all for, thank you all for doing all you can to protect O V S D community, which also protects all the surrounding communities. Sincerely, Melinda Lynch, Fountain Valley resident since two thousand one, H B resident nineteen ninety-three to two thousand one. Uh we're getting there. Okay, so this one's a little bit smaller. Bear with me. Um this is from Natalie Moser, Moser. Uh good evening, President and Board Members, Board Members and Superintendent Hanson. My name is Natalie Moser. I have two children in the Oceanview School District, one in fourth grade gate at Circle View and the other in sixth grade gate at Mesa View, and I am the VP of Community and Programs for the C V P T O. First, I want to express my sincere appreciation to our teachers and school administrators. They have gone above and beyond to make sure that our kids are learning and thriving, even though these unprecedented times and challenging, even through these unprecedented times and challenging circumstances, they have taken on the challenge and ran with it. I know they are putting in a ton of time and so much heart into these efforts. We are so sad that we can't give them big hugs for Teacher Appreciation Week, but we hope that we'll be able to see them in person again someday soon. We are excited to see many of them virtually this Friday night at our P T O Bingo Bingo Community Night via Zoom. Secondly, I want to thank you for making sure that every child is taken care of in our school district. Your focus on equity and ensuring that every student has access to technology, to the technology needed for their learning and to the nourishment needed to keep them healthy and strong as noticed and appreciated. These times are not easy, but knowing that all students have access to daily meals and that nobody is going hungry is comforting. Yesterday, the governor announced that by the end of the week, some communities will be able to begin moving into Phase Two of the reopening roadmap. Before those communities can proceed, they will need to be publicly certified and meet certain key metrics, including stability of hospitalizations, P P E inventory, healthcare surge capacity, testing capacity, contact tracing capability, and public health guidance in place. The focus behind the governor's plan is to prepare the state to reopen. Plan to prepare the state to reopen is expanding government's capacity to quickly identify infections and trace quarantine and trace and quarantine the contacts of those who are infected to prevent rapid spread and additional outbreaks. As these metrics are met, I feel confident that you will approach the path towards school reopening in a collaborative and flexible, collaborative, flexible, and responsible way that ensures health and safety of our kids and our teachers take the highest priority. By taking an evidence-based, strategic, and empathetic approach, I know our schools will reopen in a matter led by science and not by politics. We are currently safer at home, but we look forward to being safer together someday soon. Natalie Moser. And we've got three more, it looks like, so bear with me. Uh my name uh okay, this is from Oscar Rodriguez. Dear Gina Clayton Tarvin, members of the Board Administrative Staff and Teachers, my name is Oscar Rodriguez, and I'm a proud product of the Oceanview School District Public Education System. I want to first thank the kitchen staff, especially Jim and Tanya, for all they have done to provide meals to thousands of childrens, internet, children in and out of the district. This has been a very inspirational task that the district tackled almost immediately after the closure to ensure no child is left on an empty stomach. In addition, the teachers and principal at O F U have been phenomenal at facilitating the technological and language barrier that exists in our community. As we continue to adapt with social distancing guidelines placed by public health experts, it is imperative that we continue to do everything possible to save lives during these unprecedented times. My community, O F U, is a predominantly Latino community that has been drastically hit by COVID nineteen. Many individuals who own their own businesses have found themselves out of work like millions across the state, and or many are also considered essential and thus have been inconsistent, in constant risk of exposure to COVID nineteen. The governor recently announced plans to move forward with Stage Two of reopening certain sectors of the economy, given that there are metrics in place locally. The Oceanview School District has a history of following guidelines to protect the health and safety of our community. Most recently, with the issues involving a local transfer station that has been causing harm to the local community, I am positive that the district will continue to monitor the data and follow the recommendations of health experts to safely open our schools, reopen our schools when the time is right. Please continue to do all the wonderful things that you are doing to protect our community. Thank you, Oscar Rodriguez. Uh last one, no, two uh two more, wait. Yeah, two more, second one, short. Uh this one is from Shayna Lathus, and it says, good afternoon, Gina Clayton Tarvin, members of the Board Administrative Staff and Teachers. My name is Shayna Lathus. I'm a teacher, and my son, who will be graduating from Huntington Beach High School this year, is a product of O V S D schools. I wanted to write a letter in support of the O V S D decision to close the school buildings in light of this COVID of the COVID nineteen pandemic. I also want to applaud your decision to keep feeding the community. Thank you. You have been leading our community and have continued to support our students, teachers, and families. I wish more districts would follow your lead. Thank you for making the health and well-being of our community at the forefront. As some states begin to reopen, it is imperative that you continue to listen to the scientists and healthcare experts when making the decisions as to when to reopen. When you decide to reopen, please use caution and care when deciding how that will look. At Orange County High School District is already taking is already warning parents that their students will not be attending in-school classes all five days per week this fall. They are looking at having students attend just two to three days per week, with the other days being distance learning in order to maintain the physical distancing and cleaning that will need to be done. I trust that you will take all factors into consideration, that you will do all you can to ensure the health and safety of the students entrusted to your care. Thank you, Shayna Lathus. Um and this last one. It's anonymous. Do we read anonymous comments?
Yes, you do.
Okay, um you the boss. Let's see. Under no circumstances can school open the way it was, exclamation point. Students need to be staggered or alternate times and days, exclamation point. Until there is a vaccine, students, teachers, parents, and grandparents are all at risk. Uh series of four exclamation points, and that concludes public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're now going to move on to K, which is Communications. And we're at K one, written communications to the Board of Trustees. Dr. Hanson, anything to report?
Uh yes, we have two written communications to the board. Uh one is from Cindy McKinley on four twenty-seven, and one is from Alyssa Kimbrough on four twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you. K two, board or committee reports. Dr. Hanson, anything?
We have none at this time. Thank you.
We're now trustee communications. I'd like to start with trustee Westwell.
Well, happy COVID holiday, everybody. We've had lots of time off, and people were taking it easy. I know the parents are really unhappy with what's going on. Students love it, and I'm sure our teachers are loving it. Staying at home is pretty fun. Uh it's like all the Democrats in our state want to stay home and all the workers want to work. It's time to go back to work. Our idiot Democrat governor and other socialist leaders have been crying that the sky is falling, and we should all run home and hide. Well, it turns out that the sky is not falling. Turns out that they have not been telling us the truth again, with the help of the liberal media, of course. It's time to reopen our schools. It's time to start teaching again. This is the business that we're in. The sky is not falling. We've been lied to. The experts have all been wrong. They said hundreds of thousands of deaths and people dying everywhere, sickness and overrunning hospitals, and it just hasn't happened. They've all been wrong, and we're told to listen to the experts. Well, we need to be listening to common sense. We all know to wash our hands and put a mask on and practice social distancing. The number of deaths is insignificant. It's just insignificant. You know, we were told we were we needed to do this to flatten the curve. Well, we have. We've been successful. It's going down. It's time to move on. You know, there is thousands more people that die every year from car accidents. So, you know, don't be a hypocrite. If you really want to save lives, go out and bury your car. Let's get back to work. Thank you.
Trustee Briscoe?
I just have a short burst. I'm proud to say that President Clayton Tarvin and trustee Briscoe combined their opinion op-ed letter-writing powers together and brought all pressure to bear on the Board of Supervisors Chairman, Chairwoman to do the right thing for safety in workers. That's a mask requirement, especially on the front lines of food service and grocery stores. Many of the members of the community who are poor have parents who aren't able to get work done cuz they're stuck at home with the shutdown, and only the kids are bringing any money in because they can work at the minimum wage jobs, although fifteen bucks an hour isn't the right minimum. But anyway, the uh Gina and I pressured the Board of Supervisors with an op-ed piece that's appeared all over the county and embarrassed them into doing the right thing. Chairman Chairwoman Steele gavel down, poor Supervisor Doe, in a mean and abusive way. We helped make it more difficult for her to do that again, so when Supervisor Doe brought up his motion to provide protection for workers, the supervisor Steele agreed to let it be heard. It was seconded. It was discussed. Supervisor Steele wanted to change it to read, should, golly gee bum, maybe should wear a mask instead of shall, like Supervisor Doe advocated. The shall words were retained. It was passed three to two, and we now have additional safety in the county of Orange. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, trustee Briscoe. Now gonna go to Madam Vice President.
First, I want to begin by saying, as a parent of two students that attend our local school districts, I would myself say that I would not feel comfortable sending both of my children back without ensuring that we can guarantee the safety of my children. As many of you know, I am one of those people that are high-risk, and so it would be detrimental for my family to do that. But regardless of it being a personal thing, as an elected official, it is my duty to ensure the safety of all students, all kids, not just my kids. And I think it would be extremely shameful on our part if we proceeded to open schools without having the proper guidance to ensure that we can guarantee the safety of the children. And I think that is our biggest, what we have been tasked to do as board members. And so for us to, whether we believe it or not, whether you stand for it or against it, I think the safety of children should always be a priority. And I think that to say otherwise is it's a little silly on my part, but I say that I will always advocate for the safety of kids. So I look forward to seeing a plan that we can ensure and protect our families to ensure that we are doing the right thing. And again, I understand there's families that are on both sides of the issues, and I understand that. But I think we have to ensure the safety of kids. That should always be our number-one priority. And to add to that, I just want to say once again how thankful I am to our cafeteria staff for everything they are doing, for being in the front lines, for ensuring that all those students that need a daily meal are getting it. We are so thankful for you. We appreciate your dedication, being there and ensuring that any kid that is hungry is receiving a meal. I'm so proud that we are continuing to do that. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, thank you. I'm a little tired. That was a lot of reading. I'm a little upset that none of you said, hey, good job, clerk, for reading those fifteen pages of actual stuff, but thank you for the thumbs up. I do not consider you insignificant, Vice President Singer. I consider you very significant, and I consider your health significant. And I know a lot of people try to make this about the health of the kids, and I realize that, you know, the kids have immune systems, and in this case, the COVID virus is not necessarily affecting them as badly as it affecting other people. The fact of the matter is, is those kids don't come to school and live at school. Those kids come to school, share germs, and then go back out into our community. And then they come back to school, and then they go back out into our community, and they come back to school, and they go back out into our community. And they're going, I've said this before, they're going home to grandparents. They're going home to people who may be at risk to this virus. And so keeping them home means saving lives, period. We follow science, and that's what the scientists are telling us to do. These people are hired by the government to set up think, set up programs. They're highly skilled, well-educated, and they've had the trust of many administrations, Republican and Democrat. It is only in the recent past, in this recent past few months, that we've begun to question them. I have never questioned them, and I think it's completely irresponsible of public officials to not trust the people that we put in place to keep us safe. That being said, um as far as teachers not working, I have been working this entire time. I don't know what teachers the trustee trustee Westwell knows, but I've been working this entire time. My wife is a teacher in Oceanview School District. She's up early in the morning working, and a lot of times we're grading things late at night before we go to bed, well after school hours. Uh we're answering emails before school hours. I've I was grading something one night at ten o'clock at night, and I had a student turn it back in after I graded it, like immediately, at like ten at night, and I re-rated it again and updated his grade. That's the kind of work that we're doing from home. In some ways, I'm working harder from home than I worked at, than I ever worked at school. It's different, for sure. Yeah, I get to go into my my kitchen for lunch, which is kind of nice, and I get to see my wife cuz we're both home. But we don't leave during the week. We're here all week long, teaching, and that's what we've been doing. And to suggest otherwise is an affront to the to the employees of the O V S D School School District. They've all been OVSD School District. They've all been working hard. Multiple meetings. I think they even have, like, some drive-by graduation celebration things that they're doing this week. It's been going on. I don't know what world Trustee Westwell lives in, but it's been going on. And we've been teaching, and teaching a lot. So in terms of those two things, not sure where to get any information, but it's wrong. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Like Mr. Clerk, I'm a classroom teacher as well. And I work from my home office. You can see I have my classroom set up here. I have a globe, and I have my Apple my students gave me, and my little small bus, and my American flag, which we pledge allegiance to every day, from Huntington Beach all the way to LA County to my students. I can tell you with absolute certainty that, for many teachers, working remotely is actually more challenging, and more time is put into it, just because we might only teach live for two to three hours. The other three hours or four hours that we're doing is really not three to four hours. It's like Mr. Clerk said, I am up until all hours of the night, grading, sending things back. Students are communicating. It's like a 24-hour teaching cycle now. I mean, it's, and it should be, because the kids need us. They need us. We are second parents to them, just like the Education Code says, in parentis loco. That is what teachers are. We are their local parents when they step foot onto our campuses, and when they step foot into our home offices that are serving as online classrooms. Teachers, I respect you. If you're listening, if you're out there, all of our school employees, you're doing so much hard work. I appreciate you. And I also know that every life does matter. To say that any death is insignificant is not just crass. It's callous, and it's cowardly. And I can tell you that here in the Oceanview School District, we are not going to be coming back until we are ready to come back. That's going to be fall, because we're going to do what's right for children. The Oceanview School District staff, our esteemed superintendent and staff, agree with all the public comments that came in this evening. That's the beauty of the Oceanview School District community. We are all on the same page, and the page is, let's do what's right for the health and safety of kids. And like Madam Vice President, I too have health issues. Some of you know that. If you don't, I'm going to, to be honest about it right now. I'm a person that's at high risk. And so we have to be careful when we send our young children back to school. I have a second grader and a ninth grader that go to public schools. If they come home and I catch it from them, it could be devastating to me, and to my mother who watches them as well. This is not just about one person. It's about an entire community. I think we need to all keep that in mind. With that being said, I think I'm going to close my comments with one last thing. Trustee Briscoe, you've always been such a strong advocate for children. I've been honored to know you for eight years and to work with you. Political parties, we might be different there. We might be from different parties, but it doesn't matter. You always step up when you need to, to be the voice for children, for the voiceless. Thank you for writing that op-ed with me to get the supervisors to see the right path. And now I want to thank Madam Vice President, because she too has authored an op-ed with me and with Trustee Kropke from Brea Unified School District, who's their clerk, and it's been published today. We hope to be able to share it with the community on the exact thing that so many of our public comments were about tonight. The fact that while childcare might be reopened per the governor's phasing in the summertime, schools won't be. So I hope to be able to share that with the community. Thank you, Madam Vice President. You are truly an advocate for children, just like our Clerk and Trustee Briscoe. And I just want to thank you colleagues for all your support. Okay, we're going to move on now. We are going to the Superintendent's Communications. We're at K4. Dr. Hanson, would you like to go?
Yes, and thank you so much. I wish to thank our entire OVSD community for their cooperation during this school closure. Protecting the health and safety of our staff, students, and community is our utmost priority. Nevertheless, we miss all of you. And although we are closed, we want you to know that many of our employees are working remotely, or they're here at the district or at some of our school sites with safe social distancing. And many of our employees are working to get school ready for Fall 2020. So new student enrollment for next year is accessible online by visiting our website. So if you need in-person assistance with enrollment, I know some people might, including kindergarten enrollment, our district offices will be open for limited hours beginning in mid-May. So stay posted by looking at our website for those hours and days that will be open. We ask that everyone follow our safety protocols by sanitizing and wearing a mask when you visit the office. And in turn, we're ensuring that our custodians are sanitizing regularly. There has been much talk about reopening our schools. The Oceanview School District will remain closed to students for the remainder of the school year. Assuming it is safe to reopen, we intend to return on our original start date of September 9. We will not open early. We know that how school will look when we open next fall is yet to be determined. But we will look to our health experts on best methods and protocols for reopening. So in the meantime, stay-at-home orders for students and teachers continues. There's no doubt that our transition to distance learning has been challenging, and it isn't always perfect. But nevertheless, I'm proud of the work our teachers have done to swiftly shift to a new method of teaching during these extraordinary circumstances. And I want everyone to know out there, we continue to work on our distance learning daily. We're working with our staff to improve the delivery of content, to improve their competency with online tools, and for best methods for addressing individual student needs. We know that there are many end-of-the-year activities that cannot occur in their traditional manner, and I'm pleased that our principals and our PTA and PTO leaders are working together to look at alternative methods for end-of-the-year activities. We will keep you posted. Next week is in Oceanview and across our great state, many places are celebrating staff appreciation. And I wish to commend all of our staff, from our custodians to our food service workers, to our teachers, to all of our technicians that work in the office, for their exceptional ability to pivot, to work from home, or when coming into work, working in a different way with social distancing and adhering to safety and sanitation protocols. Together, we will get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. So we're now at K5, which is PTA, PTO, PTSA, PTO Roundtable for the Presidents around our school district. And we are so honored tonight to have the President of the PTO Roundtable, Mrs. Leslie Sheridan. Ms. Sheridan, I'm so happy to see you tonight. You're here, that you're going to be making a report. Go ahead. You have, you have five minutes.
Okay, so thank you for having me. Good evening, President Clayton Tarvin, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hanson, and Cabinet Leslie Sheridan here to give the report on our President's Roundtable meeting, which was held May 4, Monday, May 4, by Zoom meeting. So it was our first Zoom meeting that we held. And I'd like to thank President, Superintendent Hanson, Trustee Singer, Dr. Hofer, Dr. Conroy, and Keith Pharaoh for your input in our meeting. So I must say that we jumped right in, and we, Superintendent Hanson fielded the discussion on distance learning. And we reviewed the whole thing and the challenges that we all face. There was discussion about families who are working at home, or families who are home without work, and the stresses that that puts on the family, as well as the kids and their in the distance learning, but being away from their teachers and away from their friends, and how that challenges the student. But then also, there was a large discussion on our teachers and what they're tasked with, with the motivation and keeping the kids engaged in learning while they're separated. There's a challenge there, too, with that social and emotional learning when we're separated. We really are feeling that at home. The teachers being tasked with working on building the students, their, their, meeting the standards so that they are ready for the next level of school, next grade that they're going to be going into, and doing this all apart, and, and the challenges that that sets in place. So that led right into our discussion about grading. And Dr. Hofer reviewed the, the concept of credit and did not participate in distance learning. Now, we recognize that this is a binding by the governor's order to, what is it, do not harm students because of the situation that we're in. But everybody still is in that mindset of GPA. And so the discussion was about how does this transition into the next grade? And we had a discussion about how all schools, you know, we're talking about elementary, middle, high school, and then going into college, how we're all faced with, all schools are faced with, this segment in time that we're basically in this credit, not participating, or credit, no credit in some, some other districts. And what does that mean? And so what we discussed and everybody brought to the table was their knowledge of how all the schools are going to be working together to make sure that students are in the right classes next, their next grade, next year. And for example, you know, commonly, we have those math classes that you have a middle schooler who's in an advanced math class, and how do we make sure that they're in the right class when we go forward? And there's the grading that happens in the class. There's the teacher and their evaluation of the individual student. Are they willing, are they able to take on the next task of an advanced class in high school, and then the testing? And so we really do have all of that. We have the work that they had done in the, done up until we went home. We have the work that they're doing now, that they're turning in and making sure that they're on task to, to learning those concepts. And then there has been note that there's going to be those placement tests. Now, what that looks like and where that's going to happen, we all recognize that we don't know the answer to that yet, but that people are working to put that in place so that students will be in the right classes next year. And, and, and we're thankful for that effort. And we know that this is a difficult place to be in. As, as, you know, as people who are running a district and running schools, right? We recognize that. But boy, everybody still chomps at the bit on that GPA, right? So just so that, you know, that's something that was widely discussed. Another subject that we reviewed was the celebrations, right? The promotions. And one of the biggest promotions that's happening right now in our district is those eighth graders transitioning out of the district. And what are we going to do for them? How are we going to recognize them? So we've come together as the middle school PTO, PTAs, the principals, and Superintendent Hanson, we're going to be meeting together to make sure that there's something at every school. And a few ideas came up while we were discussing this topic of doing a virtual graduation, making sure that those who were going to be doing speeches had an opportunity to tape themselves, and it was put into place in a video that every student was called on, and a picture would come across with all of their achievements. Any performances could be, could be done and then put in place in the video, and that would be something that would be produced out, and that the kids could have that as a keepsake. Or even doing drive-through in the car under a balloon arch, and, you know, get your diploma, and, you know, a picture taken and driving on. So there's all sorts of ideas, but what we're going to be doing is working with Superintendent Hanson to make sure that we're on target to meet the guidelines, you know, as far as social distancing. But we want to do something. We want to make sure that that, that there's something for every school, has something. So one of the other things that you probably all have seen is those lawn signs that we see.
Ms. Sheridan?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You, you have met your five-minute mark. However, I'm going to take, hold on. I'm going to take a point of personal privilege and afford you another minute because you're talking about really important things for our kids. So go ahead.
Okay, so we only have a few things. So the lawn signs that you see out where people are recognizing that there are students who are moving on from their particular school, we're doing that for the eighth graders. So we're working in conjunction with the school and with the district, and we want to say thank you very much, Superintendent Hanson. Thank you for making sure that that happened for us and partnering with us to make sure that those lawn signs are produced. I'm going to be picking up Spring View's lawn signs tomorrow, and we will be figuring out how to get those out to the families after we get off this call. So that's actually happening is very exciting. During our meeting, we went over the PTO, PTAs' balance sheet, and these are Keith Foyer, the Director of Fiscal Services, reviewed what we have in the buckets at the district. You know, what does Spring View have, that money that was forwarded to pay for certain things? Where are we at? Because some of the field trips and the activities that we thought were going to happen aren't. And how is that money going to carry over next year? So Mr. Foyer has put together an outline of all the money, where it was going to go, and what's going to be carrying over. So that was wonderful to go through. That good, good accounting lesson there.
Hey, ready?
And then, Dr. Conroy, he reviewed all of the retrieval of personal items out of lockers, returning textbooks, Chromebooks. And, and we asked him, when all of that is coming together, when that committee comes together with their plan, that we get to hand out yearbooks, too.
Ms. Sheridan, can you hear? Okay, you've met your another-minute mark.
That's it.
Okay.
There you go. That's my report.
That was a really thorough report. We appreciate it because we haven't seen you the last couple times. I'm sorry that if you hadn't, I don't know that we had even extended the, the invitation. I apologize if that didn't get to you, but thank you so much for being here. I hope you'll be at our next meeting. Would you please?
Yes, we will, we will try very much. Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Take care. Okay, we are now at K6, which is Employee Association's Communications. And as I said earlier in the meeting, Mr. Bozart, the President of CSCA, is having technical difficulties. He sends his regrets. He's not going to be making a report tonight. However, we have the representative from OVTA, and I see her there. There she is.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome. And, and we're so happy to see you, Ms. Cardina Jocelyn. Go ahead with your report.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be back to report out for our association. I, on behalf of our association, we are sending a very heartfelt thank you to Julianne Hofer and Felix Amula for the work that they have been doing in partnership with our association, in our distance learning rapid response team. We have made such gains since closure that many districts haven't been able to see and haven't been able to get there. And so we truly are ahead of the pack, and we are making decisions that are best for our students academically and social, social and emotionally. And in working with my other 27 Orange County School Districts Presidents, I am so appreciative of the partnership that we have with OVSD and OVTA, because without it, none of the great gains we've made would have been possible at this point. And I'd also like to thank the Board for taking our pal seriously, for bringing it to us, for supporting it, for embracing it, for continuing to help us grow in our partnership. We all know, as Presidents, that you cannot have a partnership if your school board does not support it. And so we thank you tremendously that you have supported us the last few years in growing this relationship. And I just want to share that the tremendous work OVTA and OVSD has completed since closure, again, is astounding. We have decided collectively what our grading is going to look like, how we're going to disseminate information to our parents, as well as our students. I would just like to... I would just like to say that. Our teachers are working their hardest. We've always worked our hardest during the school year. But at this moment, we are truly, truly working our hardest in making sure that we're connecting with our students. We were not given the opportunity to even say goodbye to our students. Before we closed and it, in speaking with families and students from all grade levels. This was a big undertaking for our children to make. They are having to schedule themselves like a college, an online college course that they've never had to deal with. And they are working so hard. And doing the best they can to extend their learning and keep progressing. And we are just so proud of our students who were able to rise to the occasion. And keep school at the forefront and maintain that academic learning so they're successful next year. And that's all I have. So thank you.
Great. Thanks so much for that report. We appreciate the information. Take care now. Okay, we are at L Reports and we're at L one, which is the dual language immersion update. Dr. Hanson?
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And Dr. Hofer and I are gonna just transition. So just give me a minute here.
One second, I'm having some technical difficulty. I can't get to. So are you intending to broadcast your screen onto our screen? Dr. Hofer, Dr. Hanson?
Yes, we're going to do that in one minute.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think you're, you're seeing it now. Yes, we can see the screen now. Thank you, Dr. Hanson.
Okay, well, tonight we're going to. We're going to give you a presentation on our dual language immersion program. And we are excited to offer a dual language immersion program in Spanish at Harborview. That will begin in September of 2020. Okay. So I'm going to stop for a minute. And I think I'm going to have to have Ms. Hofer assist me. It's not, it's, it's not moving.
Okay. Let me see if I can share my screen.
Okay.
Can you? Can you see the presentation?
Yes, yes, we can.
There we go.
Okay, so tonight we're going to tell you about our dual immersion program. We're going to talk about the benefits of the, the program. And we're going to tell you what our program design is going to look like and how parents can enroll. So a dual immersion program helps build bilingualism and by literacy in both English and a second language for us, it would be Spanish. By integrating both English learners with English speakers. Who are proficient in English into an educational experience. So the dual immersion program has many benefits and this is why we've chosen to bring it to, to Ocean View. We really do believe and the research will show that students can become global citizens in a multilingual, multicultural world. If they become proficient in two languages. So one of the program benefits is this enhanced academic competency. Research has shown that, that a dual. Language immersion classroom approach directly correlates with greater educational achievement. Another benefit is increased job opportunities. We know that in today's global economy, that people are serving customers in a variety of languages. So the research highlights the growing needs to attract and promote multilingual workforce. Among our students as they progress into the workforce. Another opportunity or a benefit rather of this program is a higher level of engagement. A study has shown that compared with students in English-only classrooms. That dual language students have somewhat higher test scores and also seem to be happier in school. So there's greater engagement, there's better attendance, kids will come to school more regularly. And students in dual immersion programs tend to have less behavior problems and higher parent involvement. And, and finally, it really does improve empathy and cultural awareness. That we know that it not only helps our native English speakers. But English learners improve their communication skills, their empathy, their cultural awareness. And we know that there actually is a study that has shown and suggests that bilingual instruction may. Force all the onset of Alzheimer's disease later in life. Presumably by making the, the brain work harder as it processes information in two languages. So there is greater benefit for such a program. And so now Dr. Hofer is going to take it over and talk about the goals of the program.
So the program we're developing here in Ocean View has four primary goals. The first is around language proficiency. We want our students to be able to think, speak, read, write fluently in both English and Spanish. We want them secondly to achieve at or above grade level in both languages. We want them, our students to develop and cultivate an understanding and appreciation of diverse cultures. And finally, we're looking for this sense of respect and responsibility for one another, for our school, for our community, our country and the world. So what does the program look like? Well, the, the program is actually has a balance of 50% of students who are English learners in Spanish. And 50% fluent in English speakers, excuse me, those students who are fluent English speakers. May also be bilingual in other languages. And the reason this 50-50 model is so powerful is that students in each group serve as language models for the other. We're looking at what's something called a 90-10 model. And what this means is in that first year, 90% of the day would be in Spanish and 10% in English. 80, 20, 70% in Spanish and then 30% in English until we get to 50% Spanish and 50% English. By the time they get into the upper elementary grades. Now you'll notice there's a chart on the left and a chart on the right. What we're looking to do is to create a cohort in September of both kindergarten and first grade students. So those first grade students will start off with a 90-10. And progress through despite the fact that their first year is first grade. Now, why did we choose a 90-10 model? Well, because the research suggests that reading achievement specifically in Spanish is higher in 90-10 programs. Than programs where 50% of the time is Spanish and 50% of the time is in English. And that there, it just contributes to this higher level of proficiency in the partner language. For both students speaking English and students speaking the, the, the partner language. So what does this look like? It means that our students have access to core content in Spanish as well as English. Now this varies by grade, but you can imagine when we have a 90% of our day is in Spanish, that it will be. Math, science, history, social studies, Spanish language arts and English language arts. And then varies by grade level as we move, progress through till we get to that 50% breakdown. Students will have access to Spanish library books, both in their classroom and in the school library as well as supplemental learning materials. And these classes are taught by B-clad expert teachers. Who have a specific certification in bilingual and cross-cultural language and academic development. So you know, this is a big decision for a family to make and there's some things to consider. When a parent or guardian is considering placing a child in a dual language immersion program. And when we're talking about kindergartners, you know, students may or may not be interested in learning another language. But that is a great way to start exposure to another language and interest in learning another language. It helps when students can complete, can speak in complete sentences. When they enter school of at least five to six words. They enjoy learning in a school setting. They pay attention for short periods of time to adult-directed activities and they can listen and follow directions. Once again, think about what this means for a student who may not speak any Spanish at all and 90% of the day is in Spanish. So it will require the student to be okay with paying attention, even when they may not understand every word. Additionally, our families need to be aware that this program will require a little extra support at home. Because we expect students will be coming home with homework in Spanish and we know that half of the students who will be enrolled. Don't speak Spanish, their families don't speak Spanish. So their families will be providing support in a language they may not know. All of these are considerations for families as they decide whether or not this is the right program for them. Now, we do ask for a commitment from families early on. It takes five to seven years for students to become proficient in a second language. So what we ask of parents is that they commit to keeping their children in the program through fifth grade to the extent possible. That they make sure their child does not miss school unless they're, they're ill. For families who don't speak Spanish or don't speak English. Obviously, the bulk of the exposure to that partner language occurs in that school setting. And finally, that they will support their child's education.
Dr. Hanson?
I believe it's you again.
So we're so excited to be able to offer this program and so we want to tell parents what is our, our process. So we're going to begin advertising this program and we're going to have two windows open to, to advertise and submit your interest to, to enroll. We're going to begin right away advertising this week. And our people can start putting in interest. It will all be online. And we will offer parent nights. And the first one will be on May 14th and there will be one in Spanish and one in English and there will be more information available on our website. And then we'll begin placing people, students in the program. So the placement process, parents will have to submit a dual language immersion program and tend to participate via our website. And then the district will fill the classes based on English, Spanish composition. And if we have too many students, we'll have to create a waitlist. If we don't have enough students, then we will amp up our advertising and we'll have a second window. That's why we have that window two of the May 30th through June 19th. And, and it need be have a second parent information night. To continue to try to fill these classes and fill this program. But we, we anticipate, as you, as you saw tonight, there was interest in our public comments that, that. Parents are looking for these kind of programs and we have already had some interest in these programs. So we are anxious to get the word out there and see how many people will actually enroll in our program.
Okay. Thank you so much. Colleagues, I don't know if you noticed, but what I had to do when we were listening to the presentation was just go ahead and go down the list and mute you just while we were listening. Because I was, I was hearing a lot of background noise from someone's home. I'm not sure whose, but it was kind of. Filtering in and making it impossible to hear our speaker. So you can unmute yourself when you need to, to speak as you see fit. But I would ask that you stay muted. I try to mute myself too when others are speaking so that we can hear the presentation. From our esteemed staff. Okay, so what I'd like to do now is I'd like to go down the list of our board of trustees to ask if we have any questions, comments or concerns. I'm going to begin actually with Trustee Westwell. Go ahead, Trustee Westwell.
No, I don't have any concerns, but again, I'm going to request that my microphone be kept on at all times and I'll mute my own microphone. I don't need any assistance from anyone. Thank you.
That's great. Okay, thanks. So if you can do that and make sure that you keep yourself muted. That would be great because we hear background information kind of like data and noise. Like I'm hearing from the outside, unfortunately, there's an airplane flying over my home. So I mute myself when I'm not talking. So go ahead and do that, please. Thank you so much for being cooperative. We're going to move to Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. So have we put out any feelers? As far as like knowing about how many people want to participate in this? I know you said that we have two windows in the event that we don't get enough or we need another class. Do we, I know with some people have already been sending an emails expressing interest. I think it's a great idea. I think, to be perfectly honest, I think the United States is way behind on bilingual education. Most other countries in the civilized world have bilingual education from early ages on. I know my friend from Greece. They take English, I think from third grade on to like high school. So I'm just kind of curious as to how many people have shown an interest into this, in this so far. Oh, and one other thing, why Spanish? Not that I think that's a bad idea either. I think that's a good idea. I'm just curious.
Okay, so Mr. Clerk, great questions. I think that Dr. Hanson is going to be able to answer them, but I just kind of want to say. That we do have had great interest in the school district for years. I think even since I've been on the board since 2012. That there have been requests from the community to be able to have a dual immersion program. And I think that the staff came up with, with their decision about which language it should be. Based on the, the needs of our community and, and our staff's credentialing and so forth. And again, I want to ask my colleague, Trustee Westwell, to mute himself. We can hear the background. Please mute yourself. Trustee Westwell, would you please cooperate and mute yourself?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we don't want.
Hello, I'm.
We don't want.
I've been muted the whole time. I've been muted. I'm sorry. You're, you're mistaken. I've been muted. I just turned it off. I'm going to turn the mute back on.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Hanson, go ahead.
Well, I think you pretty much answered that for me, President Clay Tarvin, but we have had, had interest. We actually have a local private preschool in the area that, that offers this type of program and is looking for. A place to transition students to. Also, it's Spanish because we do have teachers that are, that are qualified. And that we do believe that in Southern California, that's a, that's a language that is, is useful to our students.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Hanson. We're now going to go to Madam Vice President.
I just quickly want to say I'm really excited to see that happening. I, I think our families have been waiting for a dual. I think our families have been waiting for a dual immersion for quite some time, and I'm excited that it's finally happening. So thank you for getting it done. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice President. We're going to go now to Trustee Briscoe.
Somebody has mutated, somebody mutated me. My mother didn't speak English until she was four years old. They dumped her into kindergarten, and she learned to speak English pretty quickly, because she never spoke anything else in her life. And she is wise and smart and great and 85 and doing well. Well, she could be doing better, but anyway. The program is competitive entry, and we need to make sure we keep our promises to ourselves in that regard and don't get to a feel-good spot and position. So some GATE programs claim to be all tested in, and then, in fact, when you lift up the tablecloth to see what legs are holding up the proposition, you find out that, in the case of Oceanview School District 10 years ago, only half the kids tested in, the other half were Tiger Mom children who wanted their kids to be in the GATE program. I don't know what the number is, whether it's 50%, 60%, or anyway. At what point in time you lose the claims and value of a bilingual immersion with kids, with students who are all those wonderful things, eager to learn, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent? And if you can't fill the classes up, whoops. So we need to have a plan for that, the re-advertising, the rego at it's a great idea. It's a competitive entry. That should be, that should be huge in the billboardings upfront, that it's, they'll be testing and examination of students to see if they meet the minimum qualifications. This is a great program, great idea. The four things the program seeks to accomplish are are wimpy, and I don't agree with them. The last two are not measurable. The program should have measurable and quantifiable things that it's going to do, and feeling good about the world, and being engaged, and looking over the horizon for how wonderful things are, is not measurable or quantifiable. It's feel-good language. And the one before that, about cultural appreciation, the Spanish language culture goes from the darkest African descents of slaves in Santo Domingo and South Mexico to the whitest, lightest, Jorge Ramos and Carlos Slim in Mexico City, Spaniards off the boat in Spain, is a Spanish language country, obviously, because that's where the word Spanish comes from. So I'm not sure what cultural appreciations are planned to be taught. Oh, English language, English language appreciation, what's going to be taught there? English crumpets and tea? America, the greatest country on the face of the earth? How about those Caribbean islands? And so on and so forth. So that objective is weird and is unquantifiable and doesn't serve much of a purpose. The first two objectives, I think, are good and should remain. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Briscoe. I appreciate that. I I do want to say thank you to Dr. Hanson and Dr. Hofer for creating such a informative presentation this evening. I look forward to seeing this program up and running and and off the ground, and do appreciate that, all your work that you have that you have done. So it looks like we're going to move forward. Yeah, so unfortunately, I have to say that Trustee Westwell keeps unmuting himself, and I keep hearing background noise from him. So I put him on hold just for a moment so that I can finish my comments, and then, once I'm done, I'll I'll take him off hold. So just so that the public understands what's occurring here. Thank you to the other trustees who are and our staff that are abiding by putting themselves on hold, sorry, on mute, when they need to let others speak as a as a sign of respect. Thank you so much. Okay. Let's see here. We are going to go to M, the consent calendar. So is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, are you making a second?
This is Trustee Westwell, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We've always been able to hear you, because you refuse to mute yourself voluntarily. So are you making a second?
I I I have to disagree with you. I I have been muted the whole time. What you're saying is categorically wrong.
This is not the
Do I, do I? Hello?
You're out of order. You're out of order.
You called on me.
No, I said, do you have a second? The answer is yes or no. Do you have a second? We're not in debate, because the consent calendar doesn't have any debate, per Robert's rules.
No.
Second?
No, I am not, I do not have a second. If my microphone was on, I could just say yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, we're going to move to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Hello, I'm not ready to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. That's that's unfortunate for you. There's no discussion on the consent calendar, so we're going to move to the vote.
Well, I would like to make a motion.
You want to make a substitute motion?
Madam President, do I have the floor?
I am recognizing you. I've already asked you the question of, do you have a substitute motion?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for giving me the floor. I would like to make a motion to direct the President to not mute the trustees' microphones for any reason. That's my motion. Let's see how the trustees respond.
Is there a second? Your motion dies for lack of a second. We're moving on to the original motion that is pending on the floor, which is to accept the
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Please don't interrupt me. And we are moving to the main motion, back to the main motion, which is pending before us, which is to accept the consent calendar as presented. Okay, so Trustee Briscoe, you can feel free to unmute yourself. Everyone can mute and unmute themselves. That's how we're doing this this evening.
What is it that you're calling out for?
I am calling the original motion that's pending on the floor. Do you vote yea or nay on the consent?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Aye or nay, Madam Vice President?
Aye.
Mr. Clerk?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Um, I have not heard what the motion is, because I was put on hold. I couldn't even hear the meeting. I was prevented from even listening. I have not heard a motion. And so having not heard a motion, I'm not prepared to vote.
So are you prepared to abstain? Because I disagree with you. You were in the meeting. You actually made a substitute motion, so in fact, you did hear.
I'm sorry, you're mistaken. When you cut me off and put me on hold, I was not participating in the meeting, and you were violating my rights. Don't do it again. Let's move on. I'll vote no.
Thank you for your vote, and I disagree with your statement. No, you were in the meeting, but thank you. And I vote aye, so therefore, it passes 5-0. We're now moving on, and we're at N, old business, which there isn't any, so we're going to go to O, new business. So we're at O1, Administrative Services Data Protection Agreement for Digital Education Services between Oceanview School District of Orange County and Khan Academy is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Move.
Okay, so a motion made by Trustee Briscoe and a second by our Vice President. Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
No.
Singer? Souders?
No, ma'am.
Westwell?
Will you please state the question?
The question that is pending before us is approve Administrative Services Data Protection Agreement for Digital Education Services between Oceanview School District of Orange County and Khan Academy. And that motion was made by our esteemed colleague, Trustee Briscoe. How do you vote?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Trustee Westwell, are you there?
I have no discussion.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Souders?
Aye.
Westwell?
Aye.
And I am also a yes, therefore, it passes 5-0. Thank you. We're at O2, Human Resources, Oceanview School District and Oceanview Teachers Association 2019-2020 Memorandum of Understanding School Closure Related to Coronavirus 19 COVID-19 COVID-19 Pandemic is before us for action. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
No.
Trustee Singer? Trustee Souders?
No, ma'am, I've read through it.
Thank you. Trustee Westwell?
Nope.
Thank you so much. Okay, and I don't have any discussion. We're going to move right to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Vice President?
Aye.
Mr. Clerk?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And Trustee Clayton Tarvin is an aye, therefore, we have a 5-0. Thank you so much, trustees. We're now at O3, Human Resources Resolution Number 201920, layoff by elimination of classified positions due to lack of work and/or lack of funds is before us for action. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
No.
Singer? Souders?
No, ma'am.
Westwell?
No.
Thank you, and I don't have any discussion either, so we're going to be moving to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Trustee Singer?
Aye.
Trustee Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And Trustee Clayton Tarvin, I am a yes as well, passes 5-0 unanimously. Thank you. We're now going to move on to O4, Human Resources Resolution Number 231920, a resolution implementing certified, a certificated layoff and terminating service, services of certificated employee as a result of reduction or discontinuation of particular kinds of services before us for action. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
No.
Trustee Singer? Trustee Souders?
No, ma'am.
Trustee Westwell?
Nope.
And I have no discussion either, therefore, we're going to move to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Trustee Singer?
Aye.
Trustee Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I am also a yes, therefore, it's 5-0 unanimous. We're now going to go to our last new business item, which is O5, Human Resources Resolution Number 241920, a resolution of the Oceanview School District of Orange County designating May 11th to May 15th, 2020, as employee, week of the employee, I should say, is before us for action. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Great, any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Trustee Singer? Souders?
Nothing other than to say aye employees.
Great. Trustee Westwell?
Nope.
Thank you. And I have no discussion except for to echo my colleague, Mr. Clerk, and say, yeah, this is great. Of course, we want to acknowledge all of our wonderful employees, classified, certificated administrative employees. Thank you so much for all that you do for us in the Oceanview School District. We're going to move to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Trustee Singer?
Aye.
Trustee Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I am also a yes, therefore, it passes 5-0. We're now at P, any other public comments to the Board of Trustees? Mr. Clerk, do we have any other comments?
I just checked my email, and I did not receive any, so I'm going to assume no.
Okay.
Hello, President Clayton Tarvin, we did get a message from Jason Bozard that he had sent in a public comment.
Hey, are you in possession of that public comment, or do I have it in my email, or how would you?
I think you have it in your email, but if you'd like it, I have it right here. I could read it.
Go ahead, Superintendent, go ahead. Thank you.
This is from Jason Bozard, Bozard, chapter president of CSCA 375. He says, unfortunately, I'm having technical difficulties, so I'm unable to speak initially. However, I feel that I must address the concerns from Trustee Westwell on behalf of our membership. I've been to so many meetings, but I've never been so outraged at the partisan insult that was hurled by Trustee Westwell. I've always tried to make a habit of not pointing out and speaking to members of the Board directly, but the insinuation that our membership is just having a good old time in the middle of a pandemic pandemic is frankly wrong, insulting, and outrageous. Many of our staff are currently working hard to support the teachers as well as maintain the facilities, in addition to provide food, and we are not, nor have we ever been sitting back and enjoying what is terrible and life-threatening situation. I would ask for an apology from Trustee Westwell on behalf of all classified staff, many who have been putting our lives in front of and on the front line every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. We're now going to move to Q, future agenda items as requested by Board members. Trustee Briscoe?
I have no further comments.
Trustee Singer?
None at this time.
Trustee Souders?
None, thank you.
Trustee Westwell?
Nope.
Thank you, and I don't have anything at this point until we get to the next agenda to create with Dr. Hanson, which we'll work on that. Okay, so we're at our Board of Trustees Roundtable, and we're going to start with Mr. Clerk.
Again, I just say again, congratulations to the employees. Thank you for all your hard work. I know that you have not been just sitting around on vacation this time. I know you've been working hard, and this is a completely new experience for you, and you've been rising to that occasion, and I'm proud of the work you do, and I'm proud of the attention that you show our kids, and I'm grateful to be a part of this district. I think we're doing a great job, and I think we're learning a little bit each day, and and I I'm actually, in some ways, kind of excited at the opportunities that these afford, because it's allowed our teachers to kind of reach out in a way that they would not have normally done, and in the future, they'll probably be better at doing something like this, should we have something that is, comes back again, God forbid, or is a longer term or more serious, you know, pandemic that's threatening lives in, you know, even, God forbid, a larger way. So anyways, thank you to our employees, and especially thank you to those people who are handing out lunches. That was an insane effort, and I just can't even thank them enough for keeping our kids fed, because I know that's been one of the major concerns that the that the community has had, and not just in our community, but in communities at large, and it's important. And then lastly, I would just say that, Superintendent, thank you for reading that public communication. You did it okay, John.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's go to Trustee Briscoe now.
It appears to me we're leaving 54,000, 54,000 teaching days on the table. The way California State configures its reimbursement for ADA, we're leaving money on the table we could be using for a summer school program. If we had the temerity to estimate real dollars and real cents at risk, we would find 54,000 days of teaching that's 30 classes of 60 students or 40 classes of 40, 50 students would, could be available in the summer to make up for the lost education in the spring. Just as we have tested and examined admission for the dual-language immersion, we could have the same standards, the same exact words, engage interested, well-behaved students for a summer program. I would advocate that we look at some way to recapture, oh, my God, Clerk Souders, I didn't mean to scare you away. No, no. Okay, that we look at didn't mean to scare you away. No, no. Okay, that we look at a program to recapture and recover. The state, I'm led to believe, does not track the ADA body count by student ID. They do it by total aggregate. So, this should all be looked into, and I will be doing my best to look into it far more thoroughly to see how we can go garner closer to 100% of the ADA available based on our attendance, if that makes any sense, because we're missing 4% of students attending school on a regular basis. And it just lays out there, useless, unused. We should use it. That concludes my comments, President Clayton Tarvin.
Thank you, Trustee Briscoe. Trustee Weswell?
Well, I just have to report out that I'm not participating fully in the meetings as the voters had voted me into this office. I'm continually being kept from participating in the meeting by apparently our President, President Tarvin, or somebody else that I don't know, but somebody needs to cough up because I've repeatedly sent emails and texts that, don't turn my microphone off. I'd want to participate in the meetings. And earlier on, not only was my microphone turned off, my whole, I got music on hold. I couldn't even hear what was going on because I was completely put on hold, and it said, you're just going to have to wait till they turn you back on again. So, the public needs to be aware that President Tarvin is exceeding her authority and turning off the microphones of Board members against their will and against the will of the taxpayers. And Trustee Tarvin needs to be aware of Board Policy 9005. She needs to understand that the authority rests with the Board of Trustees as a whole and not the individual. So, just because your President doesn't make you queen and you get to do whatever you want, you need to follow the rules. President Tarvin, shame on you for not following the rules, and shame on the rest of the Board for letting her do it. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Weswell. So, first and foremost, what I'd like to say is I want to thank our staff for doing such a great job. Thank you so much. You are doing a great job to be able to make sure that our kids are learning. I know my son is. He's doing amazing with his teacher. And so, I want to thank you for that. And I want to say to Trustee Briscoe, Trustee Briscoe, I'm not aware of the days. Okay, Trustee Weswell, can you please mute yourself? I'm asking for voluntary that you can mute yourself because you're making so much noise that I can't hear. And I'm going to reclaim my time because you're taking it from me. Can you mute yourself, please, like the other trustees have done? They've voluntarily muted themselves.
I am muted. I am muted. You're not saying this, you're skewing this whole thing. You're lying.
Okay, you're not muted because you're talking. Thank you. So, anyway, Dr. Hanson, Dr. Conroy, Dr. Hofer, Mr. Avila, thank you so much. Ms. Lee, Ms. Montgomery, I see you all. I just am so proud of all the work that you do. Thank you so much. And I do want to say that, you know, it is quite challenging to be able to, to do these Board meetings in this Zoom environment, but we are doing the most safe meeting structure that we can. We're following the governor's stay-at-home order, and even though we're considered essential employees, it's much safer for us to be at home, especially Madam Vice President and myself that have considerable health problems. And so, we do, we do appreciate all of you who are willing to be at your home or in your office, some of you, to be able to conduct this meeting with us in this way, similar to, you know, let's say 99% of all the other school boards up and down the state of California and certainly in Orange County. I do just want to say that in this environment, we still do have to follow rules of decorum. And in the rules of decorum, we ask that each other are quiet when another trustee is speaking, because when the trustee is speaking, they have the floor, and therefore, their colleagues should be, should be quiet. And so, in the boardroom, I don't think we'd be erupting. Or maybe, maybe sometimes that does happen, and it's unfortunate, but it's out of order there. Likewise, it's out of order here. So, I ask that you keep yourselves muted, unmute, and mute yourself at your will. You have the ability to do that. Thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to move to T, which is return to open session and report out of closed session. We didn't meet, sorry, S, which is closed session. We didn't go back into closed session, so we're at T.
You forgot me.
Oh, my gosh. I'm so sorry, Madam Vice President.
That's okay. That's okay. No problem.
Forgive me.
Really quickly, I just want to say to our classified staff, our teachers, we appreciate you. And if you listen to the majority of the Board, we are behind you 100%. We know how hard you work every single day. We know that this, what's happening right now is unprecedented. It's something that, as a parent, I can't handle it. So, I can only imagine how difficult it is for you as a teacher, as a classified member, to do the job that you are doing. So, thank you for everything you're doing behind the scenes. We don't get to see all the hard work. You get to see, but I can see the product of it, and I am so proud to be part of this district. So, please, on behalf of the majority of the Board, we thank you. We appreciate you. And we don't by any means think that you're not doing a wonderful job. So, please dismiss the negative comments. I assure you, we know how hard it is. I see my teachers reaching out to my student, and I see how hard they're trying to ensure that they're connecting. So, thank you for everything you are doing. And thank you again to our cafeteria staff, our kitchen staff for ensuring that all those kids that need food are getting it. We are so proud of that work. So, thank you. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And again, I apologize. I got a little ahead of myself. Sorry about that. Okay, we're now going to move on to S, closed session, which we don't have a second closed session to go into. So, we're going to move right on to T, which is return to open session or report out of closed session. And of course, we don't have anything to report because we didn't even go into a second closed session. So, now we're at U, adjournment, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
And so, because there's no discussion per Robert's Rules of Order on a motion of adjournment, we're going to go straight to the vote. So, let's go to Trustee Briscoe.
You're muted, Briscoe.
Trustee Briscoe mutes himself and unmutes. Go ahead.
Aye, 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 aye.
Okay. Okay, Trustee Singer?
Aye.
Trustee Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Weswell?
Aye.
I am a yes as well. So, we have voted 5-0 unanimously to adjourn the meeting, and we are adjourning at 7:44.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Bye-bye.